Good afternoon, everybody. We want to welcome you to this special meeting of the Caldwell Urban Renewal Agency. It's Friday, November 7th. We will ask our secretary to call the roll.
Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Brooks. Commissioner Porter.
Here.
Commissioner Cole.
Here.
Commissioner Allgood.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Very good. We are meeting here today to have a further discussion of the feasibility study that was, came to us as a resolution at our last urban renewal meeting that went to the city council for action and was tabled. There were some concerns among commissioners that they had more questions and weren't given enough time to really digest the material. And so that's really what we're here to clarify and understand today. So we will open it up to the commissioners who have questions regarding the plan, and we have our experts here to answer the questions. We will open the floor now. Who has a question? Dave?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start my questions for Michael Keith with Zions Bank. And just, just to be transparent here, I did send him to you a couple of hours prior to this. Sorry, I didn't get him to you sooner. So we don't take a whole lot of time on this, and he has some, some sort of a response that's kind of prepared in the best way for all of us. So with that, Michael, thank you for coming. Appreciate this.
Yeah, thank you.
Got called out of jury duty, or you got excused from jury duty, so that's one.
I did, so I could be here today. So this is great.
Yeah.
It's a different, different community service I'm providing today.
Yeah. So questions that I have about the, the, the report itself, question one of what I sent you right here.
Yeah.
The, the TIF revenue redevelopment part, that part of, of that report. Tell me how and why the grocery revenue starts and the revenue starts, that revenue starts in 2030 and 2031 at, what is that, 3,250,000? Can you explain that?
Yeah, and so that's, that's a valuation that's going to be driven in, in those years. And it's really just kind of built from the plan that Adam and his group put together in terms of, you know, when we think we can drive a new kind of grocery store, you know, in that area. So we're not showing that valuation coming on until, until you see it in that 2030, 31 timeframe. We don't have it right away today.
It's kind of what I thought. I wasn't sure if, you know, the Albertsons down the road here was going to have to cough that money up, or that's something that comes out of their bucket.
A hundred percent. This would be a new development, a new grocery store being driven, you know, in that area.
Okay. Question two, there's a projected 3% growth revenue model, which is stated right up front that it was a conservative forecast. Historical slow pass with URA, URA starts. Tell me how yearly inflation, which today I think it was at 3.01, can affect this projected positive number that we have in this report?
Yeah, I guess if you think about, you've got the expense and revenue side of the equation, right? And so we've got, you know, the revenue side, that growth rate, that 3%, right, is, is trying to capture one existing valuation of the properties, right? What do we think that's going to, going to grow at? Because we know that there is, this is not dirt bonds, right? There is valuation, there are homes that are already there, plus any new investment that we, we might make in that. So from a, from an inflation question, right, how does that impact that? Well, that impacts our cost side of the equation, right? And so as we, as we look at inflated costs, it starts to eat into what we can afford, right? In terms of a project, you know, development, I know some of that, you know, we've kind of priced in what we think it's going to cost today, right? To put some of those infrastructure pieces in, I know that's coming from, you know, the city and they can kind of speak to, speak to that. But yeah, well, like with anything, right, the city does anything that we do on a personal basis, right? Inflationary costs cuts into those, you know, those revenues, right? And so it starts to squeeze, right, how much we can get out of those, you know, future revenues.
So, and I, and I think I followed you through that, but let's say inflation goes to 4%. We got a projected revenue growth of 3% on those, on those revenues. I mean, there's really no chance then of a negative or a discounted number of what we're seeing in this, in this report, or this ArchNexus report?
So when you say discounted number, are you, you're focusing on the revenue side in terms of like what we're projecting? No, I mean, if you still achieve 3% revenue, you still have that, that much revenue, right? So if you look at that lower one, I think it was around kind of that $21, $22 million projection, Mike, over 20 years, right? That would get, you know, generated. And of course, you know, one of the things that we talk about in that feasibility report to try to get ahead of inflationary cost, right, is, is the point of considering, right, for the board to consider the borrowing piece of this, right? Borrowing against those future revenues to bring those revenues forward and make those investments to get out ahead of, you know, any inflationary costs. Now, you mentioned, Mr. Moore, it, kind of the front end, the first few years, a hundred percent, we don't have a lot of revenue generation growth, right? So we don't borrow those first few years. We're looking to leverage either cash revenue that comes in and investments, developer agreements, right? Which shifts the risk to the developers. There's lots of things we try to do in those first four to five years, right? That we don't tie our hands to something that we can't afford yet, right? Until we know that we've developed, we've got some investment, and we know that there's some growth. And then by that fifth, sixth year, which was typically what happens in URAs, then it's when we start to consider pulling some of that forward and leveraging some of those future revenues to get out again ahead of some of that inflationary costs.
Okay. I follow you. Question three, tell us how, in effect, combined inflation and communicated residential moratorium can have on, on this projected growth, on this projected report, this, this here? And can it lead to negative projection consequences inside this revenue projection model?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things to unpack with that, that question. So let's start with the, the moratorium. Certainly, you know, some of the development we've talked about inside this URA. So we've got existing development that's there. That'll continue to grow, right, at whatever rate valuations continue to grow up. But again, like on that 3% measure. Now, new investment, which does include some housing, right, that's going to have to be a pivot. If, if, if there is a decision made by, you know, the city or the city council that says, hey, look, we're not building any more houses, right? I think question number one is like, well, what does that radius look like? Does the radius encompass the whole city and we're just shutting down building in general? Does that encompass certain things, you know, with a caveat that, well, we're doing this much like Middleton? Middleton put this in place because, right, they have had troubles getting measures passed, right? Like if you look at Middleton School District, they have been trying to pass a new bond for, gosh, almost 10 years now for an elementary school. And they are just at capacity, right? And so the driving force behind Middleton, to put some of these moratoriums, is like, look, we are at our capacity to develop beyond our, our means. And without additional tools, without additional investment, we can't grow that. So bring that back around to Caldwell, right? If that's the, you know, decision, right, I mean, part of the reason we're trying to, you know, move forward with this urban renewal is to provide infrastructure. There's some infrastructure already in place there that can leverage, you know, housing, and we're not building out new infrastructure to try to accomplish that. So with that said, if, if, if there's not going to be a housing allowed, because we're not, the city's not going to pass new building permits for, for homes, then you're probably looking at, you know, a pivot potentially away from some of the housing projects that are considered. But it doesn't necessarily turn that URA upside down negative, because we can't build housing. We still have other things that are in there driving revenue growth.
Thank you. Question four, tell me how negative city growth or slowed city development growth and a slowed city economy can affect this proposed URA projection? You know, and I'm going back to 2007, 2008, when I, I spent seven, eight years with a bank down in Eagle, downtown Eagle. And I saw that mortgage crisis that we had. I've, I've learned never to say never, could never happen again. With, with, with kind of that, that in mind of, of that kind of scenario, or whatever you think, what, how, how would that affect this financial report?
A hundred percent. No, and I think that's a, that's a great, great question. You know, I think first of all, we start out with, that's why we try to have conservative growth projections to begin with, right? Because we understand there's fluctuations. In fact, if you read through that report, you know, one of the things that we do in that report is we reapply the last 10 years tax rates, right? And how that, because the other dynamic that's happened, right, is that housing went up, right? Well, housing value goes up, tax rates go down, that impacts revenues inside the urban renewal. And yeah, revenues went down, and almost all urban renewals experienced, you know, revenue declines as a result of that. So, you know, remember, these are, you know, these are passive tax revenues that are coming into, you know, the urban renewal. And so there's no doubt there's, there's ability for fluctuation. And if you think about slowing growth, well, we'd have to understand kind of what that means. Meaning that if we, if we're seeing one valuations decline, right, okay, well, that's not creating new revenue. So that means that the only way the urban renewal is going to get new growth that's going to drive, sorry, let me back up. Going to get revenue growth is through new growth, right? It's not going to come from the existing base at that point. And it's going to need to offset, you know, declines. And so that could definitely slow down projects. It's definitely going to slow down progress. Now, you know, the timing in which that happens, you know, the, the URA is likely going to, you know, delay, you know, borrowing or anything else, right? And have to come up with different tools, right? Again, going back to developer tools and other things to leverage those revenues and shift the risk on something like that. But it's not impalatable that that could happen, right? That you could see revenues decline at some point in the future, because economic nature of the world says, like, well, things are just, you know, less. Now, on the flip side, right, if valuations are going down outside the city, now remember, that could drive tax rates up, right? And so that is an offsetting factor to what can be driven inside the URA.
Okay. Thank you. That was an easy, easy question. Question five, explain the process portion and the proceeds of tax increment revenues as it's calculated. Potential shortfall, potential shortage, and tell us what could potentially cause a shortage in debt service payments?
Yeah, and if I, Commissioner Moore, if I'm following your question correctly, really what we're, we're talking about is if we have issued bonds, we've committed, right, to annual debt, but now has to be serviced by the URA, you know, what does that, what does that look like? And, you know, a couple of things. One, one of the things we do to try to help protect against that is something we call a coverage ratio, right? So we're not going to, we're not going to allow, right, or advise that the urban renewal do what we call a one for one, right? Meaning that if I've got a million dollars of revenue coming in, then I'm going to have a million dollars of debt service coming in at the same time, right? We're going to, we're going to say, well, if I've got a million dollars of revenue coming in, I can borrow 500,000, right? Because that's my one and a half times coverage that allows for, right, revenue fluctuations. So that's, that's kind of the first way that we protect, you know, the urban renewal. The second way we protect the urban renewal is there's going to be likely a requirement of a reserve. And we kind of talked about this in our, our feasibility report, right? So that's the second backstop, you know, on those things, right? So yeah, for some reason, we do have a fluctuation of a year where revenues underperform, right? Then, you know, we have a way to tap into those reserves until we can, you know, bring them, you know, back up. So there's ways to manage cash flows on this. And again, we're not going to ever take the urban renewal to a point where it's leveraged dollar for dollar and doesn't have that flexibility to, to manage those payments. And if you look back at the history of even when the financial crisis happened and urban renewal values went down, there was plenty of debt by NAPA and other urban renewals out there, and they managed through that because of those very things that we put into place.
With, with that little piece there, with, with the NAPA piece there, historically, how did that end up? I mean, how did they come out of that? Was it a break even? Was it a, as planned?
On their, on their revenues, yeah, they, I mean, there, there was never a, a time when they were unable to make their, their debt service payments, right? And, and in fact, and in full disclosure, we, as an organization, in 2020, refinanced, you know, their, their debt and accelerated the debt. And so actually, the NAPA urban renewal and the debt that they do have outstanding, they've been able to actually accelerate, you know, that, that debt. So again, conservative projections, it actually outperformed even with a slowdown, you know, in the economy. And eventually that picked back up, right? So those tend to be in a couple of year hiccups, right, and then you come back out of those things. And again, that's what those revenue cushions are for, and that's what, you know, the ability to, to have reserves there to make sure that you can kind of manage through, you know, those processes.
Yeah. I had no, I had no idea there was a refinance option in, in that.
Yep, there, there is always an option for, for refinance typically on URA debt, you know, depending on how long you, you go out for. For that particular one, they were pretty early on it. It was a 20-year debt. They came in at year 10, refinanced it. And again, like I said, accelerated their debt pretty significantly on that, and they will probably pay that debt off, I think, three to four years early as a result of that.
But it was never set up as a 20-year amortization called in 10?
Correct. Yep. It was meant to be, hey, we're going to have to make these payments for, for 20 years. And it just, you know, but when the opportunity presented itself, they were able to, you know, refinance and accelerate that.
Okay, last question that I have for you, question six, and it came off of the, oh, just your, your, I think the last page, second to last page. What department, who's responsible on finding lenders that have an appetite for these TIF agreements? I guess it was a little bit more discovery for me with your, with your, your proposal, your, your, your visual here. Is that the economic development partner department, or is that you, you're a project manager that we're looking to hire? Who typically, who have you seen take the lead on that, or is there other sources?
That could be a couple of different folks, right? You could have municipal advisor, right, you know, come in and advise on, you know, banking and putting out, you know, materials. You know, you can, you can work with your finance, you know, department, the URA. I mean, really, the, the driver behind that is that there's somebody, whether it's us, a consultant, or somebody else coming in and saying, hey, look, we're helping kind of manage this. Hey, we think we're to a point where we can finance, right? And this is what this looks like. And so then you're developing effectively an RFP, right? To go out to banks that says like, well, here's the security, here's the credit, here is what we expect, you know, to get out of this. And you kind of put that out to banks that, you know, typically want to and understand, right? You know, TIF revenue, you know, development and how to invest in that. And so that's usually kind of a, a combined driven from somebody, an advisor that, that the city or the URA has and the, the URA team itself.
Well, thank you, Michael. That's all the questions I have for you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Allgood.
Yes, so when you were making your estimates, your revenue estimates, and you were averaging 3%, were you building in commercial versus residential? And like, were you thinking maybe 20% more commercial and 10% increase in residential? Or did you figure that into the equation?
So backing up a little bit, I mean, the, the kind of the growth rates we put are kind of just this blended growth rate, right? Meaning that, you know, you've got, you set the base, right? And within that base, we have a little bit of a mix, a lot of residential, right? But there are some commercial and other zones that are, are within that. They kind of grow at different paces, a hundred percent. But, you know, we, when you, you look at that, it's like, yeah, you can get granular on that. But at the end of the day, what blended rate, right, do we think we can get to based on the mix that's within there? That's seems reasonable to achieve, right? And could be that at certain times, you know, commercials out, you know, performing, you know, residential or vice versa, as we've seen, you know, in the past. You know, the other part of that, right, is, well, what new is going to be developed, right? And so that's, that's a different equation. So we've got, you know, kind of this overall 3% growth, right, plus whatever investment's going to be made. And that's where it gets a little bit more granular in terms of kind of the findings, right, from ArchNexus in terms of like, well, we're going to have housing here, we're going to produce some commercial here, we're going to have a grocery store over here. In terms of how that kind of adds to the increment growth, right, from a total valuation, you know, perspective.
And, you know, because you discussed possibly a grocery store in that area and things like that that would certainly generate more tax revenue than, than houses. So I just wondered if, how that was figured in?
Yeah. No, it's a fair question. And, you know, and, and you want a mix, right? Because, you know, as, as you know, you know, housing, commercial, especially what's happening with tax rates outside that, right? You want some diversity with inside the, the urban renewal too. So that if there is housings going up outside, you got housing values going up on the inside, hopefully that kind of balances each other out. Same thing with commercial values, right, on it. But yeah, the nice thing about commercial valuations, depending on the commercial properties, right? You know, there tends to be not only the valuation of the property itself, but depending on what's getting put in place, personal property, right, becomes, you know, a big piece of that too, depending on, again, the commercial property that's being, you know, developed there.
So, can I follow?
Sure.
Kind of following up on Mr. Moore's question, the levy rate in Caldwell between 2008 and 2011 went through the roof, you know, because our values were so low. If that were to happen again, does that mean urban renewal would take an increase in revenue? Because the levy rate is going up so much, or would it, would that revenue stay similar?
Depends on how representative the valuation, right, within the urban renewal represents the rest of the makeup of the city, right? So again, when you think about, when you think about valuations for, for the city and the assessors' process, right, for evaluating those, typically they, they'll take about a fifth and actually physically assess those, right? And then they'll apply those formulas to the rest of, you know, the, the city, right? And so, you know, where the urban renewal is versus somewhere else depends on growth, house valuations, what's selling, what's not, right? And what's kind of driving those, those growth. And so if you, if you look at, if you go back through that history from like eight to 11, if, if tax rates are going up, right, and valuations are keeping generally pace with what's going on inside the urban renewal versus outside, you know, the city, you're going to see valuation, you're going to see revenue go up, right? Because those tax rates that are applicable to the urban renewal are driving more revenue. Now, the opposite can be true too, which is what we saw, you know, coming out of the financial crisis, right? And so those first few years, yeah, we saw valuation decreases, which, which were driving up tax rates, right? And in particular, if you had an urban renewal that had commercial value or something else that maybe wasn't going down as quickly as some of the residential values at the time, because it was mostly a housing crisis that was happening, then you saw revenue increases. Now, when you kind of fast forward as we came out of the financial crisis, right? And we saw valuations go up pretty significantly in home values, the opposite was true, right? And so if you look at those tax rates over time for Caldwell and Canyon County and the ambulance district and everybody that was applicable to urban renewals, those tax rates were dropping really quickly, right? And if inside your urban renewal, you did not have residential values inside there that were going up just as quick to offset, right, that, that tax rate decline, you saw decreases in revenue. And we saw that across the state, whether we're talking about, well, in particular Burley, we do a lot of work with Burley. Most of the, one of the, one of the urban rules they have is all industrial, right? And so those industrial plants, because those tax rates were going down, were not generating as much revenue because commercial properties were not growing, right, at the same pace that residential properties. And we saw tax shifting happening during that time. So again, that's that imbalance piece of it. And the nice thing about, you know, this, this urban renewal is it's got, it does have housing, right? So it's going to track. So the downside is if, hey, if housing values go down, you're not going to gain as much out of it. But if they go up, right, you're going to be offset just as much as what's going on out in the, in the city on that.
Yeah, yeah. I don't see housing going down anytime in the near future, but I guess everything is possible.
Anything's possible in this world. But I suspect that, you know, again, and kind of go back, this was actually Commissioner Moore asked this question last time we were here, which was around building permits and demand. As you guys know, there's a significant amount of backlog and demand. And if there's anything, at least we have experienced, if history repeats itself, is that Idaho tends to trend behind other markets, right? In terms of, you know, turning down. So even if you start to see a downturn in other housing markets, we tend to like lag, you know, behind that. And so what does that mean for an urban renewal? Well, if we lag behind it and we get in here and we already have a few years of growth, right? Even if we have some, some decline at some point, right, we already have some growth that's created some valuation. That's likely going to happen within, you know, the first five years when we're doing other investments. And again, not borrowed yet until we're ready to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, good questions.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Keith? Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Adam, I think I'll invite you up next. And are there any questions for Adam from the commission in regard to either the project list or the scope of the work that was provided? Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, Adam, I've got a number of them here, and I'm not going to dive too deep into them. But I'm going to start you at section 303, reimbursement agreements.
Okay.
Question one, agency shall be responsible for approving all increment reimbursement agreements. And this is kind of a mining question, but bear with me here. Agency may rely upon advice of council of economic development experts, including economic development director and staff, as well as statistical data and analyze it as director relating to specific values. So I guess, how, how does our economic development department feel about that? Is it, is that something that they're just used to doing and they're doing it, they've been doing this all along? Or how'd you, how'd we come up with this?
Well, typically when we come up with that particular item there is that you typically want to get them included. And I'm hoping I'm answering this right, and understanding what the current climate is for economic development. And the, the purpose of that is to get them involved, to get an understanding of what best fits that area. As, as Michael alluded to earlier, and we had this discussion earlier, him and I, is we're talking about these pocket projects and, and understanding where this money goes. And that, for us, I was really more of the idea of like, you want to get these individuals involved in doing so. And I don't know if in the past that's happened, but I understand that with, with Stephen Jenkins and Ophelia getting involved in a lot of these projects, they have the best understanding of what's happening and what developers and business owners are looking for. And that's really what I believe that original intent was for that.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So Commissioner, if I can, if I'm understanding your question, right? And we kind of alluded to this in our financial study in terms of developer agreements, meaning that you can integrate to development agreements to have them front-end, right? Infrastructure cross to get projects started, which are not uncommon in urban renewals. And the city has done those many times before in its other urban renewals. So there is expertise, you know, with those types of agreements. And so it's usually kind of a back and forth then between the developer to say, okay, look, this is what we think your project's going to generate. This is what you think you can recapture, and this is how long it's going to take you to get paid back from this investment. And it's kind of going back what I said in my section of this, where that's where you're kind of pushing some of that developer risk, right? Off of Off of the urban renewal onto the developer to say, hey, look, you're making this investment. Yes, if it generates what you think it's going to generate, right? Then you're going to get paid back in this amount of time. If it doesn't, then you're not going to get paid back as quick. Uh, and then part of like us or anybody else being involved is looking at those agreements. And, and we talk about this in terms of caps and floors, right? To again, protect the urban renewal as well to say, hey, we're not, we don't want to give away the farm, so to speak, right? When we do this, we want to make sure that there is some abilities to still do other projects, right? And we're not all tied up into one, one developer and one development, uh, that doesn't allow us to pursue some of the other things that we prioritized in here. So there is expertise there, uh, they have been done before, uh, by the, by the city and their renewal.
Okay, great. And you know, I should, should have said right up front, some of these questions can go to three of you, to Mr. Hilty, uh, Mr. Keith and, and you as well, Adam.
Thank you.
So whoever needs to, to correspond. So another question in that section, no increment reimbursement agreement shall last beyond the termination date of this plan.
I think that's another question for Michael.
So i- if, if something needs to sunset outside of this, this date that's all over this, uh, tell me how that works. I mean, I, I think I kind of know, but I want to hear it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that in a development agreement, right? E- especially if it's relying on TIF revenue, right? There is no TIF revenue beyond, you know, that twenty years. And so all that has to sunset and unwind, um, because as you all know, that valuation has to go back to, you know, the community, right? From a, from a taxing perspective. So if a developer wants to do something that's outside or longer, then it's a different kind of development agreement. It's not specifically a development agreement with the urban renewal. There may be a development agreement with the city, but it doesn't mean, mean that it's going to include reimbursement, right? From, from TIF revenues. And that's really the, the driving benefit for a developer to enter in those, right? With the urban renewal is that, hey, yeah, I'm going to upfront this cost and get this going. Uh, but there's a mechanism here for me to get that, that money back, right? But it can't extend beyond the life of the URA.
Yeah, okay, so you answered that. Because I was thinking if there's an existing TIF agreement before the deadline, before it sunsets, the date of the sunset, that thing can, that TIF agreement can go beyond that, correct? No?
If I may, uh, y- you might be thinking of some of those projects we still have in the east area.
Correct.
And those were not TIF agreements, those were funded by allocations that were made from cash on hand.
Yeah.
Uh, but the, the increment itself goes away when, when the, when the area sunsets. So, so there is no more, there is no more tax increment to pay for that. So if we had somebody come in for a TIF agreement three years before the end of the sunset, they could have a three-year TIF agreement, but it couldn't extend beyond that.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification.
And we might be looking at other funding options.
Okay, thank you. Section four hundred, four zero zero, property acquisition disposition, development and management. Um, section four oh one, property acquisition and disposition. Give me an example, it, it, it says right there and I highlighted it and it kind of always gives me indigestion, I guess. Eminent domain. Give me an example of this or tell me how that might work as it says, as it's explained in this report, in your report. And I can read it too if you want. It says, as specific in this plan, the agency is authorized to acquire by purchase lease option, gift, grant, bequeath, bequest, devise, devise eminent domain or otherwise any real property or personal property for its administrative purposes.
Do you want to answer that? I have two answers.
Yeah, let me, I, let me take a cut at that.
Yeah, like, like, because it's an authority, right, that's provided. So I think the city attorney should.
Sure, I'll take a shot at it and you guys can, can, um, fill in. So, yeah, the, the urban renewal agency has, uh, the power of eminent domain, just like cities do. Um, since nineteen ninety-eight, the first creation of, of urban renewal in Caldwell, it has never been used. Um, and, uh, the, and, but it is, it is in the plan because we have a twenty-year horizon on this. And so those authorities that are provided by statute, you're generally going to see, um, plugged into the plan. So that in the event that there's some reason to need to use that authority in the future, it's already in the plan. It certainly isn't statute, but it's copied into the plan. So you will see as you go through the plan, uh, some things, including the acquisition of property itself, that is unlikely to occur. But there's a lot of road improvements and, and as we go forward, where I would see that most likely occurring is if there was insufficient right of way for one of those road projects. Um, it doesn't mean you go straight to eminent domain, but you may need to acquire some additional right of way, um, whether that's for a road surface or a utility line or something like that. And, you know, we would be negotiating with homeowners. And depending on the circumstances, at least we as staff can say to the commissioners, you have this authority if, if we need to do this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hilty. I mean, this is the first one I've been through, so I appreciate you being gentle with me and patient. Um, skipping over to section four oh two, property development by agency. Um, my question, it says, uh, pay for development or construction of any publicly owned building, facility, structure, or other improvements within the project area for itself or for any public body or entity which building, facility, structures, um, demolishing buildings, prepare or cause or be prepared building sites for real property. Um, I didn't see anything in here as I flipped this over and I start reading, you know, any environmental concerns. I guess the question is, should these things come up? You know, we, we take something into own or we're, we're considering it. Where, where, when do we step in or where, where's the regulation of, you know, has the soil been tested? Does the, does the building have asbestos? Is this a, a win-win or is it, could be at a opening a can of worms? Is that kind of correspond with that section? Is that a question?
Yeah, actually, I think that's a, a blanket view of, of that. In fact, I think that's exactly what, um, urban renewal was up against when the Tilling was built, that there was certain testing that took place, but wasn't accurate and then had to get retested. And I believe urban renewal covered that cost, right? So it falls within that line. Um, but if the city took ownership of a project, it's really up to the city to handle all that work. Um, but if a developer owned it, then of course that's on them, um, unless the urban renewal decided to compensate them for that.
Then goes the question of where are we going to find the money? Who's going to pay for it?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Section four oh two point two, relocation of persons, including individuals and families, business concerns and other displacements of project. So I guess that kind of gentrification word pops into my head. It says, if the agency receives federal funds or real estate acquisition or relocation, the agency shall comply with twenty-four C four, part forty-two implementing uniform relocation assistance and real property acquisition policies that are applicable under federal law. The agency reserves the right to extend benefits for relocation to those not otherwise entitled to relocation benefits as a matter of law. Have we ever had to do anything like that before, Mr. Hilty? Maybe you shaking your head, yes, can you give me an example? I, I guess I'd like to know.
Sure, I, I can. Um, the, now, I don't know that it was, there's a federal law trigger there that goes along with federal funding. So I don't, I don't, and, and then it's mandatory, okay? So if, if during the course of the next twenty years, there's revenue from some federal program, federal grant, CDBG funds or wherever, uh, and, and that relocation is triggered, then it, we're, we're saying in the plan, we, we recognize that, that relocation assistance could be mandatory. Beyond that, we're saying it could be voluntary. Where it was used before, um, the one that comes to mind is, uh, where the Tilling project is now. There were, as you'll recall, numerous buildings in there that were acquired by the, the agency during the, the, the east urban renewal area. And there were, um, I believe it was there, I know that it happened, Dave. I, I think it was some of those buildings and businesses that some of them were tenants. Um, and the owners sold out for the larger urban renewal project and those tenants needed to find new digs. And there was assistance provided by the city in trying to locate a place for them to move. And then some actual costs were paid in connection with the, with the actual move. But, but it was really a product, it is a, I should say, it's been used as, as a product of when people, they're not forced out necessarily, but they kind of make room for redevelopment. And, but then they're moving and that's a cost that goes beyond, you know, what they're paid for their building, kind of a thing. And so it was used at times, uh, for that purpose. Seems like there was some other instances that were similar where people had to move, um, and, and they were paid some relocation expenses by the urban renewal agency.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Uh, section four oh seven point two, rehabilitation and retention of properties. Let me just read this really quick. Agency for retention and rehabilitation shall be repaired, altered, reconstructed and rehabilitated in such a manner that it will be safe and sound in all physical respects and be attractive in appearance and not detrimental to surrounding uses. No variances shall be granted which changes a basic land use or which permits depart from provision of this plan. In permitting any such variance, the agency shall impose such conditions that are necessary to protect public peace, health, health, safety and welfare and assure compliance with the purposes of this plan. Any variances permitted by agency under shall not supersede other approval required. Mark, can you explain that one to me? Please, thank you, Mr. Hilty, thank you.
Certainly. Um, so we talked about how many of the statutory powers, most all of them, have been copied down into this plan. Not because we anticipate using them all, but because we want those to be tools for unforeseen circumstances. Um, one of the things both that you see in, uh, the urban renewal law, uh, is that when projects are engaged in, they have to comply with the urban renewal law and the plan. And, and so you will see things in the plan that impose requirements. And so one of these things has to do with, okay, if the agency is going to engage in building and rehabilitation, uh, it needs to be safe, it needs to promote health and welfare, it needs to comply with the laws. And that would extend to, uh, to private developers with, with DDAs, right? With, with a development agreement. And, and so we would point back to the plan and say, no, you, you cannot shortcut some of this stuff. You're going to have to comply with the law, the product's going to have to be safe. And again, the end goal is presumably what you're doing is taking a dilapidated or blighted building and rehabilitating it. And you don't want it to become dilapidated again, so you want to do it right. And, and that, because that is a requirement of the plan, right? Then it is required that when the agency approves a development agreement, that that be part of the deal. And, and same thing with the developer. The developer has to accept that as part of the deal if it's, if it's a development agreement, because it's got to be consistent with the plan. So you have the powers lined up and then you have the plan provisions. And when you exercise those powers and when private developers touch on incentives, right? Development agreements, this, this is among the requirements. You'll see some other stuff in there that's, um, there's stuff about non-discrimination, right? About ad valorem taxes continuing for twenty years. And those kinds of things are, are to make sure that when you're engaged in redevelopment, it really does meet the long-term goal of urban renewal.
Okay. Mr. Hilty, answer me this one here in section five oh five, participation of LIDs. LIDs are completely outside of this URA revenue, correct? I mean, those are
Correct.
Those are, is, if, if the property owner wants to take one on or shall be asked to by the city?
Yeah, the, the, the agency cannot form an LID.
Yeah.
It has to be formed by the city.
Right.
Uh, but remember, the plan is adopted ultimately, if it's adopted by the city council through ordinance. And, and so I think, I think basically what we're saying here, as, as I read this section, is, um, that the, the agency is given the authority, not the obligation, to participate in an LID by paying those LID assessments. Again, and, and LIDs by their nature are, are public improvements only.
Right.
And, and so we've talked about this in the north area, um, with Chicago Street, improving it with an LID and then paying some of those LID assessments because the development of Chicago is, is a development incentive. So it's just basically saying, among the tools you have, agency is to participate in the LID in ways that make sense to the commission, should an LID be formed by the city.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, gosh, I have one for section nine hundred, but I think, I'm pretty sure, uh, Michael, you answered that already. With the examples of two thousand seven and two thousand eight. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think that, that's all I have. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Were there any other questions for Adam? Chris, did you have one?
Not for Adam, for Mark.
Sure.
And I believe I know the answer to this, I just want to put it out there. We've had quite a bit of discussion about economy changes, land value changes, things like that. Whatever change happens, the taxpayer, whether in or in out of the district, their tax rate does not change. Am I correct? They, they pay the same tax rate no matter what, what the situation is? I hope I'm answering that, asking that correctly, I don't know that I am.
That might be a good Keith question, that the, the taxes can change, right? Levy rates go up, values go up, maybe go down, right? So the taxes change, but they're uniform inside and outside the urban renewal area.
Yeah, that's what I'm after.
Yeah, so I, I think to maybe reiterate your question, that nothing, that if, if we have a, a situation where the urban renewal revenues decline, right? There's, there's, there's no way for the urban renewal to, to increase the taxes or cause taxes to increase for residents, uh, in any case, inside or out, right? So though, all those, all levies, right? And again, that's why we, I, I use this word passive income, but meaning that, right? That, that the urban renewal is not in control of any tax rates whatsoever, right? All the taxing entities are still in control of their own tax rates, uh, whether that's Canyon County, whether that's the city. And so they go through their normal budgeting process, they set their taxes, they set their taxes based on whatever market value, right? Is, is persistent at the time and then that sets the tax rate, right? And so then that tax rate flows through to the urban renewal. So if those, if those tax rates go up outside because of other forces, right? Then they'll go up inside, you know, the urban renewal. If those go down, like we talked about with housing going up because of, again, other forces, then they will go down inside the, the urban renewal.
Thank you, that, thank you, that's what I was after.
Rob, if we can have you step up for just a second, I've got a couple of questions. You've reviewed, you've reviewed the project list with Arch Nexus and you have been in charge of putting the numbers together for, for the feasibility study. You have a high degree of confidence in, in things as they stand?
Um, I have a high degree in confidence, yes, as things stand. Let me, uh, let me just explain this real quick, uh, the numbers that are put together here. Um, I went through the, the plan that was provided to me by Adam. And the plan had specific, the specific area, of course, and then the, the road areas, the parks, and the things that, uh, were of interest to be included in the plan. So I took those items and to the best of my ability and, and keep in mind, without going out and surveying the roads and walking up and down the roads to find out where the sidewalks are dilapidated, all that. I didn't do any of that. I just took a high level, um, view of the roads, the dimensions of the roads, and I plugged in, uh, just some basic unit prices for all the improvements that may be necessary. Um, and this is the list that I came up with, it's on the first page of, uh, of the spreadsheet. I, I can't read mine because it printed out too small, but I know, I know what's in there. And, uh, the list, the, the total cost comes out to fifty-two million. Now, the, not all these projects are going to be completed as part of this urban renewal area. This just lists out some, the options that the urban renewal commission has. And all of these projects, uh, one by one, will be approved by the commission before any project would move forward. And so the commission has the flexibility to decide which projects they want to do and maybe which ones they don't, because priorities may change over time. Um, a lot of these projects, uh, like I mentioned, um, are, are rough estimates of what the costs may be. Without, without having a design, it's hard to put a specific cost on it. Uh, some of the things that, that I did add in a lot of these were sidewalk improvements, uh, curb and gutter replacement where it's dilapidated. One of the big things that I put on all of these roads is a pressure irrigation line. And that'll help for future development and, and maybe get our city out of some of these irrigation issues that we've been having. And then, uh, just some other kind of general things that are in here. Um, we also, uh, I, I went through some of the parks and tried to identify as best I could what the cost of some of these parks would be. And then, uh, and then there were some miscellaneous items like paving alleys. And that's one of those things where I, I measured the dimensions of all the alleys and included all of them. But there may be some that are already in decent condition that don't have to be replaced. And so these estimates are correct, uh, is based on the information I currently have. Um, when we start putting these projects together, some of them may come in way under these numbers. Some of them may be about the same and some may be over, um, but that's okay. We roll with the, uh, the numbers that we get as we go through design. And then, uh, the funding that urban renewal receives can be allocated to whichever of these projects that the commission feels are appropriate.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. Cole?
Yeah, Rob, thanks for being here. Uh, I just have one, just a general question to you. Based upon your education, training and experience and your review of all the documents here, do you have any concerns?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, that's a great question. Um, I do not have any concerns. I feel that, um, the urban I feel that the urban renewal area, this is the best way to really initiate development in an area. There's always the argument that we don't have to create an urban renewal area, we can simply just take, you know, the taxpayer money that's allocated to the street department and do projects in a specific area. But those funds are spread so thin throughout the entire city that if you really want to focus on one area, my opinion is that this is probably the best way to do it. The commission has a very close oversight of all the projects that are initiated over the 20 years and has quite a bit of control as to what we do and what we don't do. And like I mentioned, priorities can change, and the commission can decide what we want to do based on how the economy is and how things go.
Thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Ms. Warwick?
So, thanks for being here, Rob. So I'm thinking of what you're saying is, you know, that's a good way to get improvements done in that area of the city, but that doesn't mean that the city doesn't already have some plans to do some of those things, and those things could also be done outside of the urban renewal with city street funds, correct?
Yes, good question, that is correct. The city always has the prerogative to go in and do improvements in any part of the city that they feel are necessary. An example of that is we have $50,000 budgeted right now for streetlights in that entire area, and we've already started replacing some of the streetlights to make sure that we have better lighting for now. It could take a while for some of these projects to get off the ground. And so the city does have that prerogative. This would be a backstop that would basically ensure that we can focus on some of this area up there. And I will mention one other thing, it was brought to my attention recently by one of our council members, that maybe there's funding, federal funding available for some of these areas. And there certainly is through programs. I know that a lot of that funding is very competitive and it's difficult to get, and sometimes when you get funding, it still takes five to seven years to get something actually built. An example of that is a pedestrian project we're doing on Montana that was approved in 2016, and it doesn't go to construction until 2027. And so the federal funding's always an option, and there's no reason why we can't plan for these projects in the plan and also pursue federal funding. If we get the federal funding, then that would just eliminate one of these projects off the list that urban renewal has to pay for. And so I think we can come at it from two different angles.
Rob, of the allocation area that sunset from 1998, can you recall any urban renewal money that was spent in this particular area that we're talking about now? I can only think of one project, but you may have one.
Yeah, you're jogging my memory a little bit, but we did spend some money. We had, we had allocated, I want to say $500,000 at one point, to come down and do the crossing that is on North Illinois. And then we did a lot of sidewalk work down through parts of that area on the north side of the interstate. On the south side of the interstate, in this area specifically, I'm not thinking of anything specific that we've done, and that doesn't mean that it didn't happen, I'm just not remembering. But I know on the north side of the interstate, we did certainly put forth some effort to get some sidewalks built and that crossing on North Illinois to help school students get up to the school on Canyon Hill.
I think the only, the only other project that I could recall was that median strip on Centennial where it had been landscaped and they went back in and put in.
That, yes, that, and then also, now that I remember, we did do some, no, that, sorry, that was CDBG. I'm thinking of the lighting that we did at Lyons Park, but that was a different program.
Historically, then, we could say that this has been an area that has seen very little investment.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Mr. Algood?
I think we did the Rice House.
Yes.
We need some investment there.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, Rob, you said $50,000 is allocated for lights, is that just, where's that, is that the entire city or is that just over here? And 50,000, what does that get you for 50,000? Is that, I mean, what do lights cost, I guess?
Great question. So it is intended for the north area, this specific area, basically, everything north of the railroad tracks to the interstate between Centennial and 10th Avenue is basically the area. 50,000, if you're putting up light fixtures and running conduit, it doesn't get you far. But we've started by, with low-hanging fruit, by replacing bulbs that are only 30-watt bulbs on a lot of these main streets, up to 200-watt bulbs. One of them at the intersection of Fifth and Chicago has already been replaced, and in my opinion, it's made a big difference. And so that's where we would start, and replacing bulbs is much cheaper than putting up fixtures. Once we feel like we've gotten a lot of those attacked, then we would go through and start looking at specific locations where fixtures would be beneficial for the public, for students waiting for school buses or things like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rob? Rob, thank you.
Thank you.
That kind of brings us to the end of the commission discussion on this matter, but I know that there were some people in the audience that wanted to kind of weigh in a little bit. There are things that I believe that you want us to hear as an urban renewal agency, and so we will sit for a few minutes and listen to some of those concerns. We all have been following this particular process for a lot of different reasons, and we would be remiss if we didn't thank Mr. Miguel Orozco, who's joined us today, who brought this whole thing to our attention a year ago this month, and kind of lit a fire under us about the living conditions in that part of our city. Dave, before we open the floor for some folks that may want to comment, do you have a...
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Hilty.
Very good.
And I think I'd need him right front and center, if I could. Mark, a few questions. So I printed off everything that was sent out to us, Fifth Street, Kimball, 12th Avenue improvements, Freeport, Galveston, Boise Avenue, Elgin Street improvements, Centennial traffic signal, Green Belt pathway, Canyon Springs Park, and good old Lyons Park. I did kind of share a little bit of this with my Lyons cronies, just, heck, they want to make Rob president of the club now because they like all those improvements. That made him real happy. So this area, you know, that I coined the phrase "land that time forgot," I guess I just, I got to ask this question. So, you know, when we had that East Urban Renewal that sunsetted in '22, was it? I think that was my first...
Twenty-one or twenty-two.
Yeah, been on this commission for a year, and that sunsetted. I guess I was kind of disappointed that some of those funds, if not quite a bit of that fund, overlooked a lot of the north area that it was included in, okay? And switching gears with the Brooks Commission, with Roger Brooks, I guess I'm, I've asked him the question about that urban renewal out there, the Fifth and Chicago project, you know, if he supported that. Yeah, he supports, it sounds like he supports projects that are, you know, make the place look better, you know, as long as they don't correspond with what he's trying to do type of a deal. I talked to him a little bit about that, and I communicated that in my one-on-one, but I didn't get a chance to ask him about how some of these URA funds might be used for projects, other projects than what we have designated for, okay? So who ultimately governs or enforces that those funds are going to be used specifically for those projects? And other asks that come to, right to where you're standing right there, and they'll ask us to do something and, or do this or do that, and then pretty soon those funds get depleted or they get pecked at, and they're gone. And then what are the legalities of that nowadays? I mean, I'm sure things are different than what they were back then when that was established, but if you can kind of update me on that, because I'm concerned.
Sure. Let me, let me take a stab at that, because I think I get where you're going, Dave. When the East Urban Renewal Plan was adopted in 1998, the law was very different, and it's, urban renewal is something that has been probably before the legislature most years for changes of some kind. And there have been several years where there were significant changes to the law made. When they do that, typically existing plans are sort of grandfathered in. At the risk of sort of oversimplifying the law in 1998, it allowed for an urban renewal agency to express sort of broad goals for projects. And then it was up to the commissioners on the urban renewal agency to consider proposals, and if you said, probably wasn't quite this broad, but if you said, "We want to enhance recreational opportunities in the south side of town," right, that might result in constructing a YMCA, right? You didn't have to have a YMCA as a specific project. I think the legislature was uncomfortable with that level of discretion, and so somewhere along the line, I can't remember if it was, there was significant changes, as I recall, in 2007 and again in 2015. I think it was one of those years where they said, "No, we want you to actually have specific projects," and that created the need for a more robust feasibility study. "Let's look at what you're going to do, how much it's going to cost, and what you anticipate your revenues to be, and that all should align, and then you can create your urban renewal area, and the projects that you build are the projects that you've put into your plan." And again, probably oversimplifying. What had happened with the east area was, it was hugely successful, in the sense that there was a lot of increment revenue coming in every year, and broad discretion on the part of the commissioners as to how to spend that. And I think what it created was maybe an impression in the public that you could just come forward and ask for some money, and that the agency had the money, and that the agency had discretion to approve whatever the project was. That has changed in the north area, it's different now, on both, on both respects. In the early years of these urban renewal agencies, and this was true for the east area as well, there's not a lot of money because you haven't had a chance to build up that But also, what you can do in terms of your flexibility with projects now is also significantly constrained. So if someone showed up at the podium at your next urban renewal meeting and said something like, well, let's assume that this one, this north area gets approved ultimately by the city council, so maybe they're standing here in February saying, "I think, you know, what you should do is, you know, create a whitewater park on the Boise River." That might not be something that we could do as an agency if we didn't have, you know, that drawn out in the plan. There's probably still some discretion there, but I guess it's a long-winded way, and I apologize for that, of getting around to this point. It's going to be, to answer this question, it's going to be the commissioners, absolutely, that will choose how the money is spent in this, well, in all of the areas, but including this central area. And you don't have completely unfettered discretion, you're going to have to be looking at this list that Rob put together of those projects. Now, there will, there can be some, you know, I mean, exactly what it means to build the street and what exactly the parameters of that are going to be might change over the next 20 years. So when you get around to some of these projects, they may not be exactly, you know, what they are there, but the short answer is, just like Rob said, the agency commissioners will choose which of those projects to fund, and your choices will be, in some respects, significantly limited to what we have in our plan. Does that answer your question?
Pretty close. I guess I'm going to drill it down just a little bit more. So when, when did the law change? I mean, when did this, you said change and things changed, and when did this change? Because I've been coming to this saying for four or five years, and it's, seems like, gosh, there's so many people, or there's so many circumstances that are brought to where you're standing right there, and they forget the ROI piece of it. And then when the commissioner says, "Tell me, you know, the investment side, when it's going to pay for itself, how it's going to pay for itself, who in the world's going to monitor it?" It's, you know, I become the bad person, or I become the person that's just concerned about the money piece of it. Well, I am concerned about it. So when did this change?
I think that it was the 2015 legislative session, it might have been the 2014 legislative session, and Adam and Keith may remember that, but I think that is when they kind of reined in, or I shouldn't say it quite that way, created the requirement for the plan to have more specific projects.
Yeah.
16? Okay.
So it was 2016?
So, yeah, thanks, Keith. I was, I was close.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be honest, I mean, there's things that come up, and I'm like, where did that come from? This is the first I've heard of it. And then I feel like I walk into these things and we're flat-footed, and then I don't know, you know, is this a qualifying project? So you just said something earlier that, that these, that as commissioners, we're going to have to follow what? Who's, who's, these lists, the ones that, these streets, we're going to follow this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let me, let me ask you this, Mr. Hilty. The Brooks Commission, do you think we ought to have, we ought to talk to them again? I mean, would it be advisable at this point to have them come in and field questions? He was just in town, I guess, Monday, but I feel like there might be some more things that we need to ask and get opinions of, but I could be wrong.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's ultimately going to be up to you. The, here just, my concern is timing one. You know, this, this, the city council, if it's going to create this area, really needs to do it before the end of the year. And there's a couple of steps. So as you know, they need to pass a resolution that authorizes this to go to the urban renew, or excuse me, Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission needs to do a comprehensive plan, and then it comes back for a public hearing before the city council, and that really needs to happen before the end of the year, or you lose that January 1, 2025 base assessment role, which is going to blow up your feasibility study. So we've been really driving at this for a long time, and I know there's criticisms that it seems rushed, but there is sort of a deadline out there. So what I would encourage from Mr. Brooks and from everybody else, whether it's commissioners or the public, you know, that, that hearing before the city council is really, you know, the opportunity for everybody to provide input. It doesn't mean you can't have conversations about it in the meantime, or people can't come up today and ask questions and try to get more information. I don't mean to be limiting it, but I guess what I'm saying is this, I think that Roger Brooks can be a valuable resource, but we'd have to access that resource within the time constraints that we're experiencing here. That's my point.
Understand. Thank you, Mark. Mr. Hilty, or excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for Adam. One last question, promise, my last question. Mr. Hilty just said, "Blow up feasibility study." What does that entail? I mean, is that, is that just parts of it? Because as I, as I look at it, and I heard it the other night, I look at it, is it the whole thing, or is it just certain sections of it?
Commissioner Moore, I actually thought about that question too, last time I was, we were city council. To answer your question as far as what would that entail, it's more on the financial side. I don't think we would have to go back out and do the interviews and that sort of thing, that I don't think that's required here because we have that information. I don't think that'll change in the next six months. It really comes down to the financial and understanding what that tax income is at that point. So it'd really be more of us facilitating Michael's information, processing it, that really is on the architectural side, we're on our planning side, but it would really be more of the additional work that Michael and his team would have to do in order to do that. But also, again, it would, I think, prolong it all the way, I think, to April. I think you got to get a quarter in, I believe, of some type of tracking before we can actually put that together, so probably put us in April.
The difficulty we ran into last year with Lee Jenke's site was we couldn't get the data that was necessary until that timeframe from the county, and it had to do with how, when they were able to get around to making some, some assessment decisions. And I'm saying more than I know, Ray Lynn could tell you about it, but there was a delay early in the year.
Mr. Keith, you're on the edge of your seat.
Yeah, I can, I can address that. So, you know, if, if there's a delay, right, for, you know, a year, right, then the information becomes stale, right? So the valuations and everything that we've built, our models off of it, right, are no longer applicable because we're rolling this forward for a year or so. So the valuations and everything that we've built our models off of it, right, are no longer applicable because we're rolling this forward for a year or so. What Adam was alluding to is the assessment process itself, right? So the county has to go out and assess those properties. We don't typically get access or ability to have access to some of the valuations until April, May, sometimes June timeframe. Because the county's going through its assessment process. And so you wouldn't have that information until kind of midsummer. You'd be starting back up on the financial, you know, feasibility, which means we'd have to get those downloads, kind of redo the, see where the valuation's at. Did it go down, did it go up, like what happened to that, right? And if it went up, right, you got to reset the base up, which means it kind of rolls forward into, you know, the projection. So that's kind of the cycle that would happen, you know, as a result of a delay if the commission decided that they wanted to delay this for a year.
Thank you.
Let me add something to that, Commissioner Moore. But also you need to consider also the pricing of this construction will obviously go up as well. So something to consider and that obviously would go in back into the report.
You're saying the cost of
Construction, yeah.
Of what we're going to do to each one of those projects?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, what do you think that'll be? Guess if you had that crystal ball, you could
Yeah, depending on what's going to happen, of course, at the beginning of the year. I mean, obviously we're seeing in the market right now with tariffs and so on and so forth. I mean, we're seeing right now electrical going up twenty percent. I think that's the bigger one of all of them. But because of the price of copper, so on and so forth, and raw materials. But that seems to be our biggest, biggest jump in cost right now is copper and electrical items and mechanical. Most of that stuff coming from China, that sort of thing, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Does anybody in the audience like, would want to address the commission? Good afternoon, Rob.
Good afternoon, I'll kick things off. You know, I've read through this plan and I'm not opposed to urban renewal. I think it's conceptually a great thing, but everything has to have a good foundation because if it's not financially sound, it's just well-intended. And when I hear a three percent annual increase and then I hear that if we don't get this done by the end of the year, we're going to have a twenty percent increase in cost, then the math doesn't add up to me. I've looked through this report and as near as I can tell, it's a two-pronged approach. And I'm not sure which one we're trying to achieve. The first one is using urban renewal to fix the past mistakes. City Caldwell and Caldwell East Unlimited Renewal, the agency have failed that part of Caldwell. I mean, there's just no two ways to put it. They failed it. They generated the increment from this part of town through the Caldwell East Unlimited Renewal District. And they spent it on things like batting cages and YMCA's and high school gym improvements. And now we're faced with a situation where we need to help them and by all means, they need help. But I don't think this is a solution. Because those things are all very well-intended and that side of town needs it. But at the end of the day, urban renewal is an economic tool. It's an investment, it's not spending. So every dollar that we spend to catch up is spending. As opposed to spending or investing in a way to create future value, because that's what urban renewal needs to do. It needs to, it needs to have a net gain so that what it's done at the end of the day produces more than what it's spent. One of the issues that I have with this is the boundary has crossed the tracks to get Main Street. And I know based on a three percent annual return in that district, we didn't include that so that we can take money from the north side to fix the Main Street problem. Conversely, quarterly, we're going to grab that piece to help finance the central district because we know that there are things coming on Main Street. But I think that's a little short sighted, given that we're going to commit funds on Main Street to the other side of the tracks when we have a very long list of things that still need to be done downtown. And so I think that's a huge mistake. I'd like to see what the study looks like if we carve that piece out completely. Because the central district has to stand on its own. If it needs to be subsidized by something else, then I think we need to really stop and think about what we're trying to accomplish. That's really all the comments I have. I mean, I opened my statement with saying that I think the concept of urban renewal works. I'm not sure what we're trying to fix here, but I don't think this plan does it. So. And I certainly don't think that our strategy needs to be, let's make a bad decision fast because we have a deadline. So I would stand for comments.
Thanks, Rob. Chris.
Yeah, if we don't do this, what do you see happening on the north side of the tracks, Rob?
Well, as a councilman, I think you need to go back to the general budget and talk about how we can inject a long-term plan over the next year, four years, five years to say, how can we get caught up? Because the deficiencies on that side of town and the blight that we like to use when we use urban renewal to attack things is no one else's fault but the city of Caldwell's and Caldwell East Unlimited and the choices that they've made over the last twenty-five years. This is a general fund thing and we're using an urban renewal tool. Were you, I told someone the other day, we're using, urban renewal is a tool and we're using a wrench like a hammer to fix our problems. And it can be done, you can use a wrench like a hammer, but that's not the most efficient way to get things done.
Well, and I'm kind of going off Mr. McDonald's earlier talking where the funds to do streets, curb sidewalks, gutters throughout the whole city is pretty thin. We plan every year for, you know, these certain things and you can't, you can't take money from A to put into B. There's certain categories, as you're well aware.
Sure.
And so the, the needs of the north area, because you're right, they have been neglected for as long as I know. Are large.
Sure.
And so to get that area a jumpstart. This is why this is coming up is because it, our ask list is fifty-two thousand, our revenue list is about fifty-two million, our revenue list is about twenty million. So we're well aware that we're not going to solve every problem down there, but we have, we're looking for something to be a catalyst to get that going. So, I mean, so that clearly we're not going to solve every problem, but as long as you and I have been around, that area's been kind of like that.
Sure.
And we need to do something to make a change. We can't just sit and wait, hopefully something will happen. That's where I'm coming from.
I understand that and I guess I would say that I don't have a lot of confidence knowing that we have a bureaucracy at the city that has failed this part of town. And we created an urban renewal agency in the nineteen nineties that failed it. And now we're going to try it with a third layer of bureaucracy to solve the problems that was created by the other two. There's a lot to do over there and you're well short even with an urban renewal. And every, as I mentioned, urban renewal has to create increment. It has to create a profit, if you will. Profit's not a word that a city uses, but if you're just, it's a clear delineation between spending money and investing. And every street, every foot of curb, every foot of sidewalk, that's spending. It needs to be done, but you're not going to reap anything in the end. So I think it's just the right idea, the wrong way to do it. And I would suggest that let's just take a break and come up with a good plan. And maybe that plan is an urban renewal. But at three percent, you can't even borrow the money on the front end to load it because you have a negative leverage against it. Because you're earning three percent a year and you're borrowing at four percent a year. It's negative. So.
Any other questions for Rob? Ms. Warren?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Pilot, I take a little bit of exception with what you said about kind of the east urban renewal area failing that section of town. Because it was directly responsible for Sky Ranch and bringing a lot of jobs to this town. Which would in turn benefit folks on the north side, just like on the south side.
Sure.
So it didn't fail us. It did an amazing thing for the business economy of this town. I see what you're saying about how, you know, none of it was invested in infrastructure on the north side and perhaps it should have been. But the Caldwell East Urban Renewal Area is touted as being an amazing area that did an amazing thing for this town. And I just wanted to recognize that.
Sure, I agree. It's been a huge success and I think that we as a city have been trying to reproduce it since. And we went from an urban renewal based on increment that had massive upside potential because it was all bare ground and became Home Depots and DMBs. And now we're trying to replicate the same model with roofs, a residential that isn't going to have the same growth. And I certainly in no way take offense to what you're saying, but choices were made. And those people paid into an urban renewal district for twenty years. And we chose to spend it on everything but them. So if the ends justify the means, I guess that as a commissioner is something you have to deal with. But much of the problem we're trying to solve now was created by ourselves. In my opinion.
Mr. Doughty.
Okay, thank you. But if I'm understanding you right, none of it should have been spent on infrastructure because there's no return on investment. So you're talking out of both sides. So you're saying, don't do this or renewal because we won't get a return on investments on streets and sidewalks and lights. But yet we should have done it in the previous one. So I'm a little confused on, we shouldn't have done it or we should have done it?
I think that you need to look at every situation with and connect all the dots. And if that means that we're improving Ustick and we can show along the way that that's going to generate growth along the way through data and a return on investment, then I'm all for that. Sky Ranch is a good example. We went out there and subsidized everything and we laid the groundwork for people to come. But where we lost our way is when we started to remodel train depots and we started to give the, a taxing entity at school money. And the county, which has its own line item on our taxes, money from urban renewal. So.
Mr. Chair. And I'm not saying you're wrong there and that, but we're sitting here now and that happened before. But my, my point being is the same is if you can replace someone's sidewalk or someone's alley or someone's light. And then they're going to build something. Like Mr. Jinky did. Which is going to save him money. Now, his is a TIP agreement, so we have to understand the difference there. But to say, we should have done it in the previous one, which was before my time, I think I might have had some decisions on a couple of those. But then we shouldn't do it now. Your argument's not making sense to me. So unless we get a return on investment, period, we shouldn't do it. How you get a return on investment is if you improve those things that the city would require a new business to improve, then you would. If we're replacing the sidewalk and we're replacing the lights, all those infrastructure things that a new business would be required to create, that saves them money in the, in the long run. Which then may, or may not, help that person develop a piece of property that they wouldn't because they might get a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand from urban renewal. So it's, you're arguing both sides to me. You're saying we should have done it in the previous one. But now, but don't do it in this one because it doesn't give you a return on investment. So I think it's all relative. It depends on what the sidewalk improvement's going to do. Meaning if you say, we'll improve that sidewalk or that intersection, which may draw a business there, which is again, all speculation, who knows? But if that business now doesn't have to improve that sidewalk or improve those lights, that could be the difference between putting in a new business or not, so.
Well, I guess if we're trying to use Sky Ranch as the success model in town, and I would probably defer on the assessor because he's here. Again, we went out and spent the money on the infrastructure to get Sky Ranch in place and it was all ag ground and it had no, no base value. And it became two hundred million dollars or whatever the number is, Home Depots and DMBs and all those things. And we're trying to replicate that model by redoing sidewalks? I mean, I don't know what a sidewalk adds in increment to the property value, but I can tell you that it's fractional. I mean, what we need to do is think bigger. We need to think about how we can go in there and talk about density, talk about really pushing commercial. Rooftops are never going to pay any money in the grand scheme of things to have a net profit for the urban renewal district, ever.
Okay. Any other questions for Rob? Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Keith. Michael, two, three weeks ago, you talked to us and you gave the example of downtown Boise. And once upon a time, that north area of Boise, the north end, yeah, you could buy homes in there for forty, fifty. It wasn't a very desirable place to live, correct?
That is correct.
So, and I know that's a little bit different model, a little bit more density. But what was downtown Boise like at that time when property in the north Boise was significantly, you know, down?
Yeah. No, that's a, that's a good, good question, Commissioner. And I guess maybe I have a little bit different view than Rob who spoke before me to say that a sidewalk's not an investment, right? Because certainly when we think about neighborhoods that we want to live in, we don't want to think about a neighborhood that we want to move in with a crumbling sidewalk, with a crumbling road, with no lights, no anything else. And if you think about the history of downtown Boise and kind of what I talked about, you know, in that, in that area, I mean, that's a lot of what you did. You had old trees that pushed up sidewalks, right? There were, there were some crumbling areas, there just wasn't a lot of investment. There wasn't a lot of investment in downtown, you know, either at the time, which is also something that we've seen change in the city of Caldwell. Those are all things that lead to vibrancy, right? When we make those investments, those lead to vibrancy, those lead to, oh, somebody's paying attention, somebody's putting investments in here. So somebody starts that, right? They started with a new sidewalk, a new road, better lighting, better pathways. All of a sudden that becomes more desirable to somebody because that's what they were looking for, right? And so you saw that with, you know, that side of town that has kind of downtown kind of started to develop. They were making those investments and improving sidewalks and access to things that became a more desirable place to live. And so, you know, these things that we, I guess, put as expenses, well, all investments are expenses, right? Like those, those are, I mean, developers make investments and expenses, right? Like they have to build something in order to get any value out of it. That is what an investment is, right, is investing in those, you know, expenses. And so certainly there are some that provide more bang for your buck than others, right? But when we think about blighted other areas, when we think about, you know, urban renewal use, it is to revitalize, you know, an area, right? Which is to direct investment in an area that we think has been under-invested in. And therefore trying to, yes, entice new investment, right? Beyond just the sidewalks, beyond just the roads, beyond anything else we're trying to do. And show that there is a commitment. The other thing that gets missed a little bit, I think, in the previous comments are that it also provides a tool for you to partner, right, with developers, right? Those development agreements that we brought up earlier don't get to happen unless there's some way of providing some revenue or investment back, right? And so now there's a return on investment for a developer because they've got a revenue source that they can utilize to help cover some of those. So you've just lowered, right, their cost of investment, right? All right, well, if you lower their cost of investment, their rate of return goes up. And so again, you've made an investment. So I think those are kind of my comments around that. Happy to answer any other questions.
That's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Warren?
I'd like to just, Mr. Hilty, I would just like you to touch on, Mr. Pilot referenced projects in the east urban renewal district, like the high school gym and like stuff with the Cannon County Fairgrounds. How that those taxing entities within an urban renewal district have access to their portion of an increment there to request for improvements.
Yeah, you fast-forward me to Monday night because we're going to have a little bit of report on this, particularly as it pertains to the county. The original, the east area was originally going to Sunset, I believe in twenty fifteen. There was some, still some bonded debt at the time. There were still some projects that they wanted to accomplish and it was, this is another, one of the laws that has changed. It's difficult now to amend an urban renewal area to extend its period of time, but it wasn't at the time. It could be extended by, by the commissioners. But that extension had, would have the effect of taking all of those, all that increment and instead of returning it to the taxing districts, it was going to extend it for the use of the urban renewal agency. It was Mayor Nankolas and I think LJ Waite at the time, went to the taxing districts that would be affected and that was the county, the highway districts, the school districts, those primarily. And they made a pitch that there was good reason to extend the And they made a pitch that there was good reason to extend the Urban Renewal Agency and that if they would do that, there would be a, a level of cooperation with those entities, between the Urban Renewal Agency and those entities. So that increment that was reallocated to the agency that otherwise would have gone to those taxing districts could be not spent by the districts, but there, there would be a heightened level of cooperation where if they had projects that were important to them, that the agency would work with them. Okay? Now, not saying it was a great idea, but that's what happened. They agreed to that. The Urban Renewal Agency was extended. And then that's where we started and you've seen it on your project list where there's a differentiation of, an accounting of that increment. Some of it says county or highway district or school district and, and city and that's all urban renewal money. It is all urban renewal projects, but, but that's the, that, that's the history of that. And so the school district then came and said, we'd like to have these improvements. And it was, I, you know, a gym and, and those types of things. And the county came and said, we'd like to have a new administration building and and those things fit within the plan. Again, the broad parameters of that nineteen ninety-eight plan. And, and so that's how that happened. I don't, um, again, whether it was a good idea, certainly people can disagree about, but that, that's the history that allowed for uh, some of those projects that, well, wouldn't even be legal at this point, they, because of the, of the changes that have been made, but that's, that's how that happened.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to address us? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Porter, Commissioners. If you don't know me, I'm Brian Stender. I am the Assessor. I'm a little underdressed today. I didn't anticipate speaking, but I feel I need to step up and uh, maybe talk about a delay in information. As you all know, I do review your policies. I don't want them to fail. If you fail, we all fail, right? That's the way it all works. When do you receive your assessment notice? That's a question. June, okay. So we're not going to have assessed values ready in April, right? So we're uh, we hope to get information to people as soon as we can. Uh, mid-May is usually the target date. So if this project is delayed, it'll be mid-May when, when values are ready to distribute to everybody, just so everybody's aware. Not withholding information from the urban renewal area. It's not what we do. I try to help out. Okay, so I think I have an outdated copy of information for this plan. Um, how would I go about getting a current, what you guys are anticipating rolling forward?
We'll have our secretary get that for you.
Okay. Cause what I have here, um, you're not allowed to overlay two revenue allocation areas over the top of each other. So Site B shows up inside of the maps that I'm looking at in the document I have. And Ophelia went to a training, so she's probably well aware of that. Um, essentially, I wouldn't know where to send the money, or the county wouldn't know where to send the money. Because there's a base and you only get one base, right? If you put two urban renewal increments over the top, then. So I'm, I'm hoping in the new plan that that Site B is excluded out.
It is.
It is.
It is. And there, there's a legal description, Brian, that, that.
Okay, perfect.
We, we recognize that from the beginning. So yeah, it's excluded.
Yeah, cause in here.
Well, you might see some maps that show the broader area, but there's a legal description that addresses that. And if we can improve that, you know, let us know what is helpful for you. But the intent clearly is to exclude Site B from the central area.
Perfect. Yeah, cause that's what I'm saying. I have older information, so we don't want to blow it up. Um, third point. In the past, when you had a, in the near past, you had a big plan like this and um, it had a, I believe Mr. Hilty said, a critical, chronic problem. And it, it wouldn't function because they included the, the base values and increment calculations. I would hope to be able to obtain a, a list of the parcels and the, how each parcel is calculated with the value in the base calculation, just so I can review it. I'm free. Again, I don't want us to fail if this plan moves forward, right? Irregardless, Brian Stender's not here. My personal opinion's not here on the plan. Um, I'm here as the Assessor. So if I could get a copy of that, I'm going to look at Michael to see if he could possibly share it. That way, the feasibility study, I'd like it to function if, I have to be able to administer it, right? So if I could help with that, I'd appreciate it. I think that's all I wanted to point out.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, any questions for Brian? Great. Well, thanks for coming. And you're dressed just fine.
It's Friday, finally.
Mr. Webster, welcome.
Hi, I'm Paul Webster, Caldwell School District Community School Coordinator. Come to bring the human side to this. I, we're talking a lot about infrastructure and money and roofs and all that. And I work with kids and families and that's kind of the way we see the world because of our work. So we do serve the kids and families in um, the proposed zone. They attend Sacagawea, Van Buren, Jefferson Middle School, Seringa Middle School and Caldwell High, as well as Canyon Springs. I, the, you know, part of what I want to share is with my school hat on, which we try and be neutral and not be for anything or against anything. And a part will be just kind of my own two cents. So um, my own feeling is to do, to invest in anything other than, or without considering kids and families is short sighted, um, because it's only looking at right now. And our kids are our income in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. Um, and so we've really got to invest in where they're at. And that is where they're at. There's a whole lot of them there, um, in this proposed zone. And um, so a few things that I, I see in the proposed URA and I want to call out, it does promote, um, something we're really striving for in Caldwell is infill. You know, it promotes, um, creating places for people in the middle instead of on the outside. And I think probably everyone in this room, um, would agree that that's probably a good thing when we get to choose that. It's not always the cheapest thing, but um, the second thing is that Caldwell School District is not full. Um, hasn't been said in this room, but in most other rooms, they will say, schools in Caldwell are too crowded. We don't need more people. And um, we have plenty of space for kids in Caldwell School District and the, I think that the whole URA proposed is within the Caldwell School District. About thirty percent of the families that we serve in the four community schools in Caldwell, identify that they are stressed about housing. Um, they're stressed about staying in the housing, getting in housing, and losing housing. And that's current survey this fall, pretty similar results last fall. And you probably are familiar with Alice, um, data related to families who are working but are overstretched. Um, they can't afford the housing they're in or can't afford reasonable housing. And that really represents the families that live in that, um, urban renewal area. The vast majority of them are employed. In fact, they probably are the economic engine of this community. They're the ones driving out with ladders and trucks and working in the fields and the factories, um, to make this place running. So we need to invest in that and making that a great place for, for those kids and their families. Their families need jobs and, you know, URA, you mentioned, you know, the Sky Ranch area, tons of our families are working there. So right on, Caldwell has done a, a ton of great things. Um, I do see some real opportunities in this particular plan. The corridors that are lined up there, Fifth Avenue, Chicago, Fillmore, um, building the business up on that. I think it was Twelfth Avenue is another one. And so I think that there is, there are real commercial opportunities within this. And, and you know, the infrastructure makes that possible. The investing a little bit can go a long ways, um, I think in this, in this community and those, um, and the families will pay it back. I believe. Um, I think, uh, some other things I want to call out, access to groceries, super important. I see it in the plan. Thank you. Um, access to recreation areas, whether that's parks or other areas. I noticed Boys and Girls Club. Boys and Girls Club is packed in right now, serving just about all the kids they can serve. Close to two hundred a night. Um, and so those are some other things I want to call out and a positive in the, in the plan I see. Thank you. Um, and I am happy to stand for questions, but I'm also happy to sit and not answer questions.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Ms. Ward.
I'm not going to ask you any questions, Paul. I'm just going to say thank you for putting a human face on it. I, I, I think I should have maybe been one to do that considering I serve a whole bunch of seniors on that side of town.
Yeah.
And um, thank you for putting a human face on it. That's the most important thing is we're trying to make that somewhere desirable to live for the folks that live there.
Thank you. Yeah, and those families are, they are working two, three jobs to survive and stay where they're at. But let's make where they're at great. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Webster?
Mr. Webster, I got a question for you.
Sorry.
Turned you on a bad leg there.
It's all good.
Let me, let me ask you this. You said reasonable housing. What, what does that consist of? What's that look like to maybe you or, or Caldwell High School?
Yeah. Um, what I can say is what attainable housing looks like for a lot of our families in that zone is packing two to three families together in a very old mobile home. And, um, or a very old house and, um, that's not inadequate, that's not adequate. Now, what it should look like is, um, something that's respectful of their humanity and, and they can afford to stay in. And so what I, I guess I would encourage, because I don't want to force families out. And I think there's, you know, there's some safeguards in the plan to, um, prevent that. And I think that's really important down the road, but I think creating opportunities for families to move from renting to ownership within their, their place. And I've seen families scrap together to do that. The second would be to make improvements on the place they're at. And so if you're in a, a pretty rundown place, how can we help you get that back together? That improves the value of that property. Um, and then, um, the other would be, um, access to services, things like sidewalks and lights. So you can wait for the bus and feel safe enough. I mean, that's what families reported in some of these meetings that, you know, around town when they did the listening sessions is, hey, we just want to feel safe and like we can send our kids to walk somewhere without getting hit by a truck. So.
Last question.
What, what are current numbers?
What are current numbers of Caldwell High School before it fills up? Now versus where, where it can go?
I can't speak to the high school specifically, but a, across our district, we have had a lot higher numbers than we have right now. And um, so post-COVID, even before COVID a little about, um, the, you know, demographics within the middle of town have, have changed. Caldwell has grown by gangbusters, but a lot of that growth is older adults without kids. And in the middle, you know, we have, we have room to serve. And so I can't put a percent on that, but it's higher than you'd think. You know, just in the hallway where my office is in elementary school, I've got three, four classrooms that don't have kids in them. So, yeah.
A moratorium that's.
Bring them on.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I hear you. Plenty of room. Uh, a moratorium that would be placed, how do you think that might affect the high school, the school, the school, school district?
Yeah.
Everything?
Um, the school district, um, specifically, I, it probably would be kind of stable, you know, assuming demographics don't change a whole ton. I think the problem comes with supply and demand. And um, right now, the cost of housing is very high considering income of regular people who work in Caldwell. And um, so a moratorium, I think, this is Paul Webster, not Caldwell School District, would probably freeze the supply, but the demand will still be there and prices would likely go up. And I think families are already stretched to get the housing they're in. I'm not an economist. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Allgood?
Trying. You did a great job, Paul. Um, and, and I completely agree with Julie. Bringing a human aspect to this is something that we often forget. We talk about ROI on dollars and uh, everybody involved in this should understand that the big ORI is quality of life. ROI is quality of life for all of the citizens in Caldwell. And whether you're been successful in life and you don't have those worries, or you're a little less successful and you do have some serious worries, they all deserve a quality of life. And that's exactly what you're talking about. And so this is not really a question, but I don't live in that area, so my tax dollars are not going to support that area. The people that live in that area, their tax dollars is going to support improving their area. And I think what Mr. Garcia and his team did is show that those people want to improve their area. And, and um, uh, it is their tax dollars that are going to improve their own area. And, and and I, I just think that is a return on investment in my opinion.
Yep. It might be twenty years till after they graduate college, but it's a return on investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. We'll take one more comment. I know Bob's been trying to get up. Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Janice Altman. I am late to the party. Um, so I'm gonna wing it. Um, I, I guess my takeaway is, I, I understand that we're in a rush to get this done before the end of the year for a following reasons. But I feel like by rushing it, are we getting it right? I feel like the more we rush it, are we doing a disservice to an area of town that's been long forgotten about? And if we rush it through, so we get it done because we have the numbers now and we need to do it, is that really the right thing instead of just taking a beat and getting it right? There, you know, if we, if we go back to what this week was with an election, twenty percent, twenty-six percent of Caldwell believes we are not doing the right thing. Should we not start listening to that? Cause that's exactly what they voted for. So shouldn't we take a beat and do what's right and say, hey, wait a minute, let's make sure we're checking all the boxes. Let's make sure we're getting it right. Let's make sure we're doing enough. I hear a lot, I live in Ada County. I love Caldwell to pieces. I work in Caldwell. I feel like I'm in Caldwell more than I'm at home. Um, and if my husband would move, I would move out here. Uh, I feel like a lot of times I sit in these meetings or I sit at the chamber and we talk about Boise and Meridian Eagle. That, I don't want Caldwell to be that. Nobody wants Caldwell to be that. I don't want to match Boise. I want Caldwell to be what Caldwell is, destination, Caldwell, the plaza. I think sometimes we're in a rush to be this big, bad city and we're forgetting what makes Caldwell Caldwell. And I feel like some of this that we've gone over the last little bit, and as I briefly read this, we're doing the same thing. We're pushing something through because we need it, because we've ignored an area for twenty years. But are we really doing a good service to that area if we just take a beat and say, well, yeah, we'd have to wait till the tax assessor and all that, but the bulk of the figures you'll have minus the assessor is kind of the basic understanding I'm getting. So what, what would be the harm in waiting, especially with, with what the community has voiced saying? And instead of making mistakes repeatedly that the city of Caldwell has done, maybe we should focus on doing things the right way, even if it slows it down. That's my two cents.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Allgood?
Oh, sorry.
Well, first of all, the idea that this was rushed is entirely inaccurate. This has been on a schedule since the day it started and it has not varied from that schedule. So there is no rush. There is no change of process. We have followed every single process exactly. We have followed every single process exactly as our legal advice has told us to do that. And there has been zero rush or zero expediting of any part of the plan. So people saying that, oh, you're rushing to solve this by the end of the year, it's not a rush. We're exactly on schedule, from, from the day it started to now. So I just want, that's not accurate that we're rushing it through. We, we hired Mr. Garcia's team to, to put a plan together. They came through with that plan exactly on the date they were required to do it. They, they came through exactly, we got our feasibility study on exactly the day we were supposed to do it. We have not, we have not had to hurry, push back, or anything else. Everything has been on the schedule that was set initially. And, and thank you, I'm not trying to yell at you, I apologize, I don't mean to sound like that. But I just want to make it clear that there is no, we're on schedules, all I'm saying.
So can I, so can I add to that? I guess I sat in the city council meeting, I don't, I don't even know what week I'm in. So when was city council, Monday? And, and maybe I misunderstood David Moore, but David Moore said, I've got a report, I printed it. We, it, it was my understanding that city council wanted to vote on this on Monday. I, I think I'm fairly accurate with that. And didn't you say that you had just gotten this report and that you needed time to look at it? That's what I meant by the rush part, not that you've rushed the process. I felt like we got to city council on Monday, we've got this report now, we need to push it through. And that's what I meant by the rush, if that helps clarify it.
Yes, yes. And, and that was a problem getting the documents out that we needed to. And I believe we're in the process of correcting that. I certainly hope we do. Because yes, that was a document problem. But thank, yes, I understand where you're at.
Yeah, that's what I mean by rushing, not that you rushed the process. I just think we owe the citizens of Caldwell, given the fact that 26% of them said we're not doing the right job to do it right. We owe that side of town to do it right. We've ignored them this long. Let's do it right. Even if that means we have to take a beat.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. Miguel?
Thank you guys for having me to come up and speak. I just took some quick notes and wanted to share my two cents with you guys. And I want to start off with thank you, guys. A year ago when I came to speak to you guys, I wasn't quite sure where it was gonna lead us, and here we are. And so as a resident on the North End, I just want to say thank you for listening and hearing my voice. You know, I like to think that I'm speaking for, you know, that side of town and the community that lives there. And so I'm actually just really thankful, you know, thankful for, you know, Mr. Chairman, Brad, Dave, you know, everybody here on the, on the committee. But, you know, you guys have been the ones that I've spoken to with the most. And so as far as, you know, my thoughts are on it, you know, you guys have brought up the ROI. When I first came to you guys, my whole thing is, you know, we're investing into youth. And that's, you know, one, one thing that I want to bring back. And Mr. Paul, I think he's no longer in here, but, you know, he brought that, you know, to, to the top of my, or to the front of my mind again. And that is what we're investing into, you know, and I'll just be brief on it, but, you know, like, as far as lighting goes, you know, daylight savings is coming into effect. And one of the things that I had brought to you guys' attention originally is when children have to go and wait at the bus stops, it gets dark out there. And so, you know, hearing that you guys are actually, I know Brad had told me that, you know, we're gonna get going on those lights. And, you know, now it's been brought to my attention that we're starting off with the light bulbs. You know, as a resident up here on the North End, to me, it means so much that, you know, I, I came forward and I spoke to you guys, and that you guys actually listened. So, you know, thank you for that. As far as, you know, sorry about that, sidewalks, you know, investing into those sidewalks, investing into those crosswalks, you know, that's gonna keep pedestrians and children off of the main roads. You know, that way they could access their bus stops safer, you know, with the lighting. And then as far as the parks and, you know, places for them to have positive outlets. You know, more than anything, parks, that provides positive outlets for them. You know, and my goal is to keep them off of the streets and keep them, you know, having fun and having a childhood. And then eventually, you know, as they get older and they grow into productive adults, you know, that's where our investment is. And I just want to say thank you, really. Those are my, my two cents to you guys. You guys are the ones that have to deal with all the pushback up here. And so, you know, there's a lot of ins and outs that I personally don't understand, and I can acknowledge that. But, you know, as far as getting behind the message that I had came and brought to you guys, which you guys were already trying to do, you know, trying to fix the errors that were made over the past 20 years and trying to do it. Like, I believe in you guys, I believe that you guys are gonna do it right. And, you know, with the, my experience with you guys, I know you guys are thorough. And as a resident up on the North End, you guys have my trust. And so thank you.
Thanks, Miguel. Julie?
Miguel, I just want to say thank you for coming and, and being the face and, and basically demanding of us what you deserve over there, what the rest of the city on the South Side has, safe sidewalks, lights, so that people can, can see to, to walk. You, you put a face to it for us. You know, we talked about it before, David talked about it before because he lives in that area. But thank you for coming and, and reminding us that it's our kids that deserve what we haven't given them and that we need to. And I really appreciate you coming forward, because I know it probably was not easy for you. You're the same age as my daughter, and I love to see your generation now trying to make a difference in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Roscoe, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So let me ask you this. Every time you see a semi full of potatoes or onions, or when they bring them home there and park them there on the street, and every time you try to walk down the, the street, walk down a sidewalk, and there's a car parked right directly in the middle of it, how do you feel that rates in safety with, with kids in the neighborhoods? Because I, I see kids in the streets, not just because there's nowhere to play, but everything's, so tell me what you see.
When you're walking around, I'm speaking from my personal experiences, it gives you two options. You have to walk on the, on the roadway, or you have to walk on private property, you know, in order to avoid that obstacle essentially. So as far as where I personally live, there's not very many semis. But I know, give or take where you're talking about, over towards Galveston and the Lions Park. And, you know, I, I usually drive there, so I, I get to avoid them altogether. But, you know, for the, for the kids that have to walk there, you know, they do have to walk. Most of them end up going around, you know, instead of going through that private property. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it puts them in the, in the street.
It does. I have a second part of that. When you walk around down there like you and I have, when, when you talk to people or, or the youth that see some of those homes, and the condition that they're in, what do you think? What, how, how does that, how does that make everybody feel down there?
Can I speak plainly?
Yeah.
It makes them feel like they're living in a ghetto. Speaking with, you know, my nephews and nieces, that's, that's what it makes them feel like. And I don't know if that comes across wrong, but that's me speaking plainly.
Yeah, I, when I step out my front door and I look across the street at an old laundromat that my mother used to take me to and sent me there, and the window's beat out of it, and you see a cat coming in and out of it all the time, and it's been that way for seven or eight years, you kind of think nobody cares, huh?
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I'm tired of it. So...
I am as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Miguel.
Thank you, guys.
Bob, do you still want to, well, we got two Bobs now. Okay. Okay.
Bob Jenkins, first of all, I want to thank everybody. I know everybody here wants to do the best for Caldwell. And, but I do want to point out in Adam's, at the last meeting that he had, 65% of those homes are owned by investors. And to, to your point, Dave, code enforcement, if the city will just focus on code enforcement, and I'm trying to remember if I've ever had the city pay for my sidewalks. But what the city did do is they offered like a 10-year, interest-free, and they paid 25%. If you push the investors a little bit and say, no, this sidewalk is a danger, you need to replace it, and put some teeth behind these things. You know, I don't know if Miguel owns his home, but like I said, and I, as an investor, I had the city come to me and say, you need to replace those sidewalks. You either do it and here's what we'll offer you, or we'll do it and we'll send you the bill. And for those 65%, I'm not talking about the people that own, you know, there's, but you could offer it to everybody over there. But you're talking about jumpstarting, that would be a good jumpstart, to code enforcement, to get those trucks to park where they need to be parked, and to go after the investors over there that own those homes, that they're not putting any money to improve them, they've got a broken window. You know, if, if somebody goes after me, you know, yeah, it might take me a little bit, but I'll get that window replaced. Because if the city is, if I'm on their radar, and I know this is an urban renewals issue, but we have city council people here, if you guys would just get code enforcement to start doing what they need to be doing in that location, I know there are other where, I mean, I, I get hammered all the time by, by people calling and saying, hey, did you see this? Or you've got graffiti here. Focus on that area with code enforcement and with, and code enforcement can handle those sidewalks as well. And that would be a jumpstart. I'm not saying that urban renewal's not needed over there, but, you know, as far as Roger Brooks, I think he's written time and time again that urban renewal is to, just like what Rob said, it's to jumpstart the urban and, and increase those tax increments. And I agree that residential is not going to do it. And as an investor, I own a building over on that side of town, on, on Kimball. It's, you know, you're not going to get a lot of people investment over there until other, a lot of other things improve. And like I said, with a $52 million price tag, you know, you gotta start somewhere. And so the easy, low-hanging fruit would be code enforcement and going after those investors that own those homes, and saying, you need to start picking up, cleaning up, and making this a nicer neighborhood, and get some teeth into it.
Thank you, Bob.
You're probably all wondering if there's anything else could be said.
We're going to find out.
The thing I want to bring before you is simply that I'm hearing that if we don't get this done by the end of the year, it's sort of a crisis. And I want to approach this commission by saying that we knew, we've got a comp plan now. We knew before this commission was commissioned that Roger Brooks was going to be looking at this area. It's been expanded by Roger Brooks and the commission. And now we're told that if we don't do it before the community is aware of what Roger Brooks is going to present in January, it's a crisis. And so my complaint is basically against process. If we knew we were going to have a Brooks Commission review, why did we go forward before that was concluded? And to the point of rushing it through that the lady made, it's not like being rushed through, but as far as the community goes, they haven't had a chance to look at the comp plan, the Brooks Plan, and this plan as a unified effort in Caldwell. So I don't buy into the, to the fact that it has to be done before the end of the year. Caldwell, what year was Caldwell formed? And we got by without it to this year. So I'd like, I think probably the thoughts I have are gonna go before the council, because as we looked at this thing first blush by this commission, we were ready to forward it without further review. It went to the council and that got sent back for this review. I'm just saying that we don't have to rush this till, by the end of the year. And if we do, it's disregarding the facts of what we knew before we rushed it, went into it. So my ask, my consideration is, let's get it before the community has a three-part process, not a one-part process. And I know you've been in touch with Roger Brooks, and you're comfortable with it, but as a community member, they don't know that. So that's the consideration I'm asking for.
Mr. Doty?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Bob, you're right, that, that Adam has been in touch with...
What's that?
Adam has been in touch with Roger Brooks during this whole time.
I know that part.
And if Roger, is Roger Brooks' plan done?
I'm talking as a community member.
I understand. Is Roger Brooks' plan done? Your council hasn't seen it, this board hasn't seen it, there's been members of the community seeing it. Well, that's what I'm saying. So if you want us to see Roger Brooks' plan, why are we waiting till January? Where is it? I hear it's done. I hear there's community members that have seen it. Show it to us. But it's secret, it's hidden, and you want to blame council and you want to blame commissions. Well, if it's done, Bob, if it's done, where is it?
It's not done.
Oh, now it's not done?
And his proposal was to present in January, so he's on schedule.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Ms. Warwick?
Mr. Carpenter, I appreciate your comments. And as I recall, kind of in timelines and thinking about it, we've been working on this for almost a year. And the Chamber and Destination Caldwell got together and, and the city, and invited Roger Brooks to come back, kind of in the middle of that. So we had already started this process. I mean, I know that he was supposed to come back years ago, and that didn't happen. You know, that when it was, when the plan was originally made for downtown, there were, he was supposed to come back, and I don't remember how many years, you probably remember better than I do, but I know it was several years ago. And we just didn't get around to doing that as the city invited him back. But when he finally was invited back, we were already in the middle of this process and considering this urban renewal area. You know, so we, you know, we've had, you know, I've had conversations with Roger as well. I guess I, I can't see allowing that to delay this process at, at this point.
I know you can't, because it was voted, it was voted to go, I say, I know you can't. It was voted to go to council before you'd even read it. So I know you're satisfied.
Well, it, it wasn't before, I, I had read it. I didn't have any questions at the last...
You read all of those pages?
We did. We had all of those pages at, at the last urban renewal meeting. I think Mr. Moore just had a few more questions than some of the rest of us did. And so that's why, as I, as I understand it, that it was forwarded back to have this discussion.
I'm not gonna debate your concern. I said I can't debate your concern, because your timelines are mixed up. And I'll talk to you more privately if you want to clear that up.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Any other questions? Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, I'm confused, because I did set through a presentation of Roger Brooks at the city chamber. And what'd I get? Just a warm-up or a half a deal or, but I thought it was start to finish. And it did name, it did go through all of these streets that are on this report. So Adam, is it, am I, was I, I didn't fall asleep?
No, you're correct.
Okay, so he has presented it to us, to certain bodies, right? Yeah?
I'm, I'm not saying that you're unaware of, that this group is unaware of what Roger Brooks has said. I'm saying that tying the things together and presenting to the community as a reviewed package is my concern. That's the process.
Okay, yeah. And I was kind of responding to Mr. Doty's comment as well, because I was, I was confused. But I take it Mr. Doty hasn't seen it. You haven't seen it.
It's in the same meeting you did. If there's an entire plan ready, we, we did discuss those specific streets and intersections. And I think I've admitted here that Adam has mentioned numerous times that he's talked to Mr. Brooks about it.
Okay.
I just don't know why we're holding the plan then.
Yeah, I just thought maybe there was more to come.
Because who says Roger Brooks is right? Then that should go out to the whole city and let everybody poke jabs at that as well, right?
Right.
So we hired Adam to do this job, we hired Mr. Brooks to do that job. And so if Mr. Brooks brings his plan forward, then let's delay that another year, so that everybody can go through it and make sure it's the perfect plan for the city. This is why we hire the professionals to do what they do, certainly with the input. Adam got input from the citizens in that area. We've heard one speak here today. And, but yet, let's not listen to that one, let's listen to Roger Brooks. Well, when Roger Brooks' plan comes forward, which I hear is done and now not done, I've heard both sides, I've never seen the whole plan, I've never seen it in my hands, or I've never seen a copy of it anywhere, but now we're gonna wait till January. Well, if we wait till January, then let's give the community another year to look at Roger Brooks' plan, to make sure it fits right. And then things will have changed in a year, and we'll have to redo that plan too. I'm saying that cities invest... saying that cities invest money in the professionals to make these plans, and then we don't wanna listen to what they have to say within those plans. Adam went out to the community, took their input. If people didn't come forward at, during those meetings, and now all of a sudden they wanna come forward and add to the plan, that's what the additional hearings are for from here, until it comes to council and goes to planning and zoning and comes back. Nothing's been rushed. It's all been outlined, it's all been put out to the community, and you get about this many people in every room, until something comes up and now all of a sudden it stop everything, and let's not do anything, and let's listen to all the different people of the community. Adam went out in his company and talked to the people in that area where the tax money will be spent and their tax dollars will be used. And this is the outcome of that. So, thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I think we've talked ourselves around the block a few times. I'm ready to entertain a notion for a motion for- Excuse me?
I, I just wanted to add, because, and again, it's just to clear up misinformation, because it's talk like, well, it's a crisis if we don't do it by, by December. It's not a crisis if we don't do it by December, except that all of the stuff that we have had to do with the feasibility study and all the stuff that we've paid Adam's company to do, that's expensive. And if we don't finish it this year, then we have to refresh all of that information at an additional cost to the taxpayer. And so, if we don't get it done this year, the world's not gonna fall apart, the sky's not gonna fall, but it's gonna cost the taxpayer more money to refresh all of that information for next year when we vote. And it will come through the same way next year, um, and will end up at December, just because they usually fall at the end of the year. So it'll be a year delayed, but, um, the crisis will only be that we spend a lot more tax dollars to refresh the information that we've paid for already this year. I hope I'm accurate there.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, before we make a motion, can we, can we, just real quickly?
Sure.
So what's the next process of this for Monday? Where, I mean, this is already voted to go to P and Z, correct?
Uh, I will let Mark speak to that, because-
Uh, it was, it was, the, the commissioners had approved it to go to city council. Um, the city council decision would be to send it to planning and zoning, and then to schedule ultimately a hearing on an ordinance that would enact the plan. So what, uh, what, what I think, you know, I'll be talking with the chairman, but I think staff's approach would be, and we heard, certainly some of the, of the city council people say, that they would be willing to get this thing processed by the end of the year, even if it took special meetings. So, so it needs to go back to the city council. It is scheduled for that on, um, the seventeenth, which I think is the, is that right, Christina? Uh, so from there to planning and zoning, and from there, back to city council for final action. And so we're gonna try to get that all done by the end of the year. There is no, there is no additional formal action needed by the, um, the urban renewal commissioners, right?
Okay, thank you. And then, not to be facetious here, but I just wanna ask the question. Has, has planning and zoning already received a copy of this from both of these two gentlemen?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Yes? They have not? Will they get it before twenty-four hours before they have to look at it?
Yes, sir.
A week prior. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Thanks for being here, everybody.